Good afternoon, I'm Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and this special meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at four o'clock on this fourth day of June 2024. In accordance with Bylaw 1-46 and Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3707, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has called for a special meeting to be held at four o'clock Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, at the School Administration Building Number Six Municipal Center, 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia 23456. The purpose of this special meeting is for the School Board to: One, an open session workshop for the School Board to be presented with an update of the fiscal year 2425 budget; Two, to convene in closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for personnel matters; Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, namely to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and matters related to the superintendent's contract; And three, to vote in open session on any matters related to the closed session if needed. Members of the public will be able to observe the open sessions of the special School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.bbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on BBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please tally the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Manning, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Mr. Culpepper is, will not be attending tonight. Mr. Callen is out on personal reasons, and I have not heard from Ms. Owens. So with that, are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Okay. Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented and modified. Do you have a motion for that? I'll entertain a motion. There you go. No? Yep. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick?
No, it didn't come up.
Oh, that is a number one, but I'll take, I'll take that. A motion made by Ms. Kendrick and seconded by...
Well, it's up here now.
It was actually by me.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Franklin, Madam Clerk for the record, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Any discussion? Voting Board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have eight ayes for the adoption of the agenda. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, we begin tonight with the workshop for fiscal year 2425 budget update, and we welcome Cassandra Armstrong, Budget Development Coordinator, and Charity Zelmer, Budget Development Coordinator. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, School Board members, and Dr. Robinson. I am Cassandra Armstrong, and with me is Charity Zelmer. We're the Budget Development Coordinators in the Office of Budget Development. This presentation is to provide you with an update of the FY 2024/2025 budget. This slide shows the agenda for this presentation. First, we will provide a recap of the FY 2024/25 budget development process. We will cover the key stages and milestones we reached, and the significant challenges we encountered along the way. Following the recap, we will present an update of the FY 2425 budget. We will also brief you on the remaining funds related to the jewel abatement settlement funds and ask for direction. To begin, let's go back to our primary budget challenges during the FY 2425 budget development process. One of our significant challenges was and continues to be the employee compensation, which affects our ability to recruit and retain staff, particularly instructional staff, as we compete with other localities. Despite some progress from last year's seventh-place ranking in entry-level salaries, recent FY 25 budget proposals from other divisions have caused us to lose ground. Currently, Virginia Beach City Public Schools ranked sixth out of seven in starting salaries, just ahead of Newport News Public Schools by a mere $5. To emphasize, we are sixth out of seven, and our starting salary is only $5 higher than Newport News, which ranks seventh. Next, as you may recall, our funding was negatively impacted by a higher local composite index. The biennial re-benchmarking process updated our local composite index, which determines the state and local share of funding for our division. Localities with a lower LCI receive more state funding, while those with a higher LCI receive less. Our LCI increased for the biennium, resulting in a reduction of approximately $5 million in state revenue for the FY 2425 budget. In terms of state funding, the Governor's initial proposed budget for FY 2425 saw a small increase in state funding, including sales tax amounting to $545,000. We also continue to be faced with rising costs of goods and services due to inflation, which affects our contractual obligations as well as cost for fuel, utilities, and other necessities. Lastly, the federal elementary and secondary emergency relief funding expires on September 30th of 2024. While sunsetting this funding, we had to identify essential positions and non-personnel costs to continue, which needed to be incorporated into our operating budget. This slide highlights some additional measures we implemented to balance the budget for the SEON. After a careful review of department, office, and school operations, we decreased the number of FTEs by 57. We collaborated with chief officers, who carefully reviewed their existing budgets and identified over $1.4 million in savings. We reduced each school's budget by 5%, resulting in savings of approximately $300,000. We also cut the cost of sit-assign subs by over $1 million. We renegotiated the terms of various contracts and reduced costs by $100,000. And finally, we increased the staffing ratio in secondary schools, resulting in a savings of $6.5 million. In the current approved budget, we were only able to include a 1.5% step increase to the teacher pay scale, with no change in the starting salary, and a 1% or 1.5% step increase for the unified scale based on creditable years of service. For our lowest-wage employees, the minimum wage was raised to $15 per hour. We also increased tuition reimbursement from $850 to $1,000 per eligible employee, while funding is available. Also, the decision by VRS to uncouple the defined benefit and the voluntary contribution of the hybrid pension plan effective July 1 will result in an additional liability for the school division for the upcoming fiscal year and going forward of approximately $7 million, based on the estimated number of hybrid employees who have voluntary contributions required to be matched by the division. This becomes another unplanned expense that we must address. As noted on the previous slide, our teachers will receive a 1.5% step increase, and staff on the unified scale on steps 0 to 14 will receive a 1% step increase, and those at step 15 and above will receive a 1.5% step increase. Equalizing the steps on the unified scale should be under strong consideration to address in the 2526 budget process. The Fair Labor Standards Act sets the minimum wage requirements that the Department of Labor enforces. However, states can exceed the minimum wage. The State of Virginia committed to increasing the minimum wage to $15 per hour over six years, starting in 2021. 2024 represents the fourth year in this process. In looking at Virginia's minimum wage, the amount remained at $12 per hour for two years, 2023 and 2024. Effective January 2025, Virginia's minimum wage will increase to $13.50 per hour, and effective January of 2026, it will move to $15 per hour. As previously shared, Virginia Beach City Public Schools will raise its minimum wage to $15 per hour, two years ahead of schedule. This will impact cafeteria assistants, bus assistants, and custodial staff. Goal Four, Strategy Six of Compass to 2025 speaks to providing a variety of personalized professional learning opportunities to all staff to support their professional growth. Tuition reimbursement is vital for our staff as it promotes continuous professional development and lifelong learning. By investing in our employees' education, we empower them to enhance their skill and knowledge, leading to improved job performance and career advancement opportunities. Effective July 1, 2024, the annual amount per eligible employee will increase from $850 to $1,000 per year. This is a cost-neutral increase due to the reallocation of funds in the Department of Human Resources. This next slide presents an overview of the school division's revenue sources used in the preparation of the superintendent's estimate of needs. In the first column, you will see the figures for the amended FY 2324 budget. The second column displays the projected revenue for the SEON. The SEON was derived from the Governor's proposed state budget. As shown, we anticipated an overall revenue increase of approximately $20.4 million, with the majority of this increase attributed to funding from the city schools' revenue-sharing formula of $18.5 million. However, it is important to highlight that while we expected a modest increase in state revenue of $4.5 million, this was partially offset by a decrease in state sales tax of $3.9 million. Thus, this resulted in a net overall increase in state funding of only $545,000. As we navigated a two-cent tax reduction, we thoroughly reviewed our budget, aimed to preserve vital services and programs while identifying areas to prioritize spending, identifying areas for potential savings, excuse me. This process involved making tough decisions to prioritize spending, leading to adjustments in staffing, resource allocation, and operational strategies. The lines in blue were cut to balance to a one-cent reduction, and the lines in green were cut to balance to a two-cent reduction. I will let you review this slide for a moment. As noted by Dr. Robinson in a prior School Board meeting, we would be reducing the staff noted through attrition and not by letting staff go. We have not had attrition in library media assistance at this point, so we will need to account for the reduction of three library media assistants in another This slide shows our revenue comparison moving from SEON to the proposed operating budget as approved by the School Board on March 12. The budget incorporated the net effect of a two-cent decrease in the real estate tax rate, as requested by the City Council. We begin with the SEON, which represents the actual budget presented by school administration, which had an overall revenue of $954.5 million. Following the adjustment for the $5.6 million revenue decrease to the two-cent reduction, due to the two-cent reduction, again as requested by the City Council, the overall revenues were adjusted down to $948.9 million. And now I will turn the presentation over to Charity Zelmer.
On May 14, the city adopted the budget, which included a two-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate and a five-day grace period for payments after the due date for real estate and personal property taxes. The proposed budget approved by the School Board in March incorporated the two-cent reduction, but did not account for an additional $218,208 cut. This amount will need to be adjusted in the final reconciliation. Governor Youngkin signed the state budget on May 13, keeping most of the General Assembly's spending priorities intact. Importantly, the budget provides state funding for a 3% compensation supplement, effective July 1, for SOQ-funded instructional and support positions. Recall, VBCPS, along with every other school division in the Commonwealth, has staff in critical support positions not found in the SOQ, meaning the divisions must account for the cost of the 3% increase from local funds. Notably, the budget did not include a digital sales tax. This slide shows how we get to our proposed amended budget. We begin with the SEON, which has an overall revenue of $954.5 million. Following the adjustment for the $5.6 million revenue decrease due to the two-cent reduction, the overall revenues are adjusted to $948.9 million. For the amended budget, state revenue increased by $18.9 million, sales tax decreased by $2.8 million, and the revenue-sharing formula decreased by a little over $200,000. This results in an overall increase over the proposed budget of $15.9 million. I will let you review this slide for a moment. The next portion of this presentation will go over the recommendations for the $15.9 million of additional funds. Ms. Lloyd will cover the employee compensation portion, and I'll come back and review additional considerations over and beyond compensation.
As Dr. Robertson shared in the March 26 presentation to City Council, we must remain competitive with our neighboring school divisions as top candidates make their disselections based on three factors: Salary and total compensation, cost of living, and quality of the school division. Recently, we have had candidates who preferred Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but decided to take their skills and talents to a neighboring division, due to the first two factors of salary and affordability. For this reason, we have a proposal that somewhat addresses this issue, keeps us in line with what the city is providing in terms of increases with their employees, and at least matches the inflation rate. With the state budget now approved, the division can proceed with how to use the additional funding for salaries. The administration submits for the Board's consideration a 2% increase in the entry rates for both the unified and instructional experience-based that pay scales, effective August 1, 2024. With the July 1 adjustment and the proposed 2% entry rate adjustment in August, employees will see an increase between 3% and 3.5%. The salary increase range is due solely to the difference in step increases on the unified pay scale. This is an issue we must address in the next budget cycle. With the approved and proposed increases, how does this impact the division's market position for teachers? Please note, we were only able to obtain information for the division shown as the other divisions are still preparing their salary scales. The slide shows that Virginia Beach City Public Schools ranks last among the surveyed school divisions. Compared to Chesapeake, our entry level will be 4.11% lower than Chesapeake's entry-level salary. This percentage remains consistent at the 5-, 10-, 15-, 20-, 25-, and 30-year benchmarks. This represents an increase from last year's 2.57% difference, and for Norfolk, we will be 8.48% lower than their entry-level salary. With the proposed increase on August 1, the percentage difference between Virginia Beach and Chesapeake will decrease to 2.07% lower than last year's 2.57%. For Norfolk Public Schools, Virginia Beach will be 6.35% lower. Remaining competitive with teacher salaries is crucial, crucial to attract and retain high-quality educators. Additionally, fair compensation recognizes the hard work and dedication of our teachers and staff, fostering a positive work environment and reducing turnover rates. This stability benefits our students, our schools, and the community as a whole. Concerning wellness leave for employees, the administration has discussed the following: Continuing or discontinuing wellness leave. If we continue wellness leave, do we provide one or two days of leave at the cost projected for subs, as shown on the slide? Should wellness leave be permanent, or should it be considered annually like the past two years? However, if funded, we will continue to maintain the established parameters on the usage of wellness leave, and we will continue to prorate wellness leave for new employees up to May 31. And now Ms. Zelmer will return to discuss these and other budgetary considerations.
Providing an additional compensation increase on August 1 will cost a little over $13 million, leaving roughly $2.9 million remaining. Here are some additional considerations for the School Board. Special education support. Academic performance for students with disabilities is of high concern to the administration. Over the past several years, we have seen a significant turnover in special education teachers, combined with an increase in students with disabilities and greater needs. This requires a significant investment in adding additional support through training and staff. An investment of $2 million is the administration's top priority for the additional funding. Wellness Day. Two years ago, the School Board hit a home run by providing staff two wellness days to be used in addition to personal reasons or annual leave. The staff has expressed a deep appreciation for this acknowledgement. Given the overwhelming need to support special education and approximately $3 million in available funding, our second highest priority is to grant staff one wellness day next year. Virginia Literacy Act. In this area, we would provide schools with additional collaboration days or site-based subs to provide elementary schools with additional support to complete the requirements of the VLA. Safety and security, this area will be addressed through reversion dollars and grant funds. Educational allowances. A longtime priority of the Board has been to address educational allowances for staff with advanced degrees. As a reminder, this can be phased in. On June 10, we will present the budget resolution for you for review and approval. It is critical that we take this step to be able to provide staff with additional compensation on August 1, one month into the 2425 fiscal year. Therefore, we need you to submit your recommendations to Dr. Robertson on or before June 7. This information will then be presented to the City Council on June 18, with the Council scheduled to take action on July 2. This leaves us with less than two weeks to prepare the necessary changes for staff compensation to take effect on August 1. As previously shared with the Board, VBCPS received $892,142.52 from the Jewel Abatement Settlement Funds in the current fiscal year. During the February 13 School Board Meeting, the School Board voted to reserve $500,000 of this amount in the Categorical Grants Fund to support a recovery school. The remaining $392,142.52 is unencumbered in the current year's general fund. We are seeking guidance from the Board on whether the remaining funds should be allocated to the Categorical Grants Fund in the same manner as the $500,000 for the development of a recovery school. If these funds are not moved to the Categorical Grants Fund, we will lose the opportunity to leverage these funds in future fiscal years. If permitted to carry forward to FY 25, these funds can be coupled with a newly appropriated state funding to support the development of a regionally recovery high school, a regional recovery high school. Thank you for your time, and we'll open it up for questions.
So, you just said that $500, what was it, left over? Oh, $392,142.52 remains unallocated. Is it possible that those funds could be given to the schools? Because we did cut back how much we allocated for each school to have.
If we don't, if we don't put in the Categorical Grants Fund, it would have to be spent by June 30.
I see. So we can't give those, give that money to the schools for like, to buy paper and that type of stuff? I mean, every year I hear from teachers that we are scarce on paper, for example. And, and every year I have to, you know, for the past three or four years, I've had to go to the superintendent and say, you know, such-and-such a school needs more paper, will you make sure they get it? I mean, why do we get to that point where we shouldn't, the teachers shouldn't be begging for paper? So I'm just wondering if maybe they could go ahead and allocate some of that money now, buy that paper ahead of time this summer, and have it ready? And what is, what other categorized funds, categorical funds could they be put to, other than something like that for schools, for the schools themselves?
Can you answer about the grant piece? I can answer about the one-time expenditures.
So the Categorical Grants Fund is, has been set up as a jewel abatement fund, and that grant is for the recovery school? And as far as we could allocate funding and just have it spent by June 30 in the school operating fund?
I mean, there's a lot of things that, that teachers, we've got two weeks left, they're still there. You know, if you allocated a certain amount of money per school and said, "Principal, here's this money," you know, before your teachers leave, are there things that they might want to order over the summer, that you could order over the summer? I'm just saying, you know, this is money that could be allocated and spent before June 30. So I'm just, I've been a teacher, and I can tell you, there are times at the end of the year where you say, "I wish I had this, I wish I had that." If I just had a little bit, you know, you go to your principal, you say, "If I had a little bit more money," and the principal says, "Well, we don't have the money right now." You know, so I'd like to be able to, to offer that, and, and, you know, and teachers could say, you know, "Hey, these are the things I'd like to have." Principals could say, "Teachers, make your wish lists out." And that's what we used to do, is have a wish list. We didn't get everything on the wish list, but we had wish lists at the end of the year. Teachers know what they need in their classrooms, and I don't want to short them in any way. I want them... I want them to be able to go to their principal and say, you know, here, here's my wish list. Maybe they won't get everything on their wish list, but I think we ought to ask.
So this is a decision point for the board. Because, again, we've got two choices. We can roll this money into the categorical grant and determine how to best spend it next year within that categorical grant. Or we can spend that money through the operating fund, but it has to be spent in the next three weeks. So that is something we'll need to know from the board when you provide me feedback by the seventh. What, what, what is your wish as a board member for the use of the additional three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars into that account? We need that information. And also, I would offer that, you know, Ms. Anderson, as you mentioned, you know, with, it's the lateness of the year. This is what happens when we don't get a state budget approved until May the fourteenth, and it takes another two weeks for the Calc tool to come out. Every school division in the Commonwealth is grappling right now and trying to sprint and make the best decision about how to use these additional funds. So this is a decision point, so we have to be clear. We need guidance from the board by Friday on what to do with this money.
All right, Ms. Brown.
So I have a couple of questions. So with these funds, are you going to be bringing back any of these positions? That were scaled back during the two cent decrease, is that included in this?
No, the, the, our plan for this fund is thirteen million, a little over thirteen million to go towards the salary increase. And then our proposal is, due to the, some of the data we're seeing, continuing, that's very concerning with special education is to identify additional support staff that, I think you recall the city council presentation I did, that we actually partnered with an external group that can provide us with teachers, which is beneficial for us because we can put a qualified teacher in a classroom. It's an additional cost above the cost of a regular teacher. But we can do that, and then we can use some of those funds to identify some high-quality training modules that we can use. We won't have money to bring back any of those positions that we had identified to be cut. What we're not doing though, is, is that we talked about, is no one's going to lose their job. We're handling all of those through, if you recall, we froze positions in February that remain frozen as of today. And as soon as this budget is approved, those frozen positions will become no more.
Okay, so I just, and the reason I was asking for clarity is I would not be in support of having the central office positions back versus putting that into the teacher's starting pay. And so that's, that's the reason that I was asking. I just wanted to make sure when we were broadly saying salaries, I wasn't talking about adding some of these salaries back in, but we're really talking about these ones that are here and our employees currently right now. I do support, I personally support continuing the wellness days. I would prefer to roll it into our budget on a yearly basis. So I, I would prefer that we make that a more permanent thing, that we offer the amount of funding. I don't think it's going to produce a meaningful increase in salaries, and I do believe that it increases the meaningful time off for our employees. It's just a small thing that we can offer, so I do support that. And so far as the abatement funds, the three hundred and ninety-two thousand roughly dollars, I would support tying that directly to something that has to deal with the epidemic we are facing in our community and country directly related to drug use and abuse. I do not support putting it towards anything else, because I believe that's what it was more intentionally came to us from, so, thank you.
Ms. Wiems.
Yes, I think this is probably a Ms. Woodhouse question. Is she sitting over there? Oh, there you are. Okay, with, with additional consideration for the remaining two point nine, that slide, the wellness day. So is this just adding one more on top of the two, or is the two gone and we're just going to have one? Your recommendation is to have one?
Yes, ma'am. The dollar amount that you see on the slide, the approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would cover, cover the substitute costs to give our employees one wellness day.
Okay, one day. And can you refresh my memory for a teacher? What are their, what days do they get? Sick days, personal? Can you refresh my memory on that?
They receive sick leave and then their annual personal leave.
And how many days? Like, how many days is sick?
Ten days of sick leave. It's one day per month for each employee. So if you're a ten-month employee, ten, eleven month, eleven, twelve. And then it's three personal reasons leave days that they also receive. And the board also has approved voluntary leave where teachers and employees can also use a day of voluntary leave to, whether it be chaperone their child's field trip or just work in a, a different event. So that is part of leave that is offered as well.
So this would be minimum, if we add that day, fourteen days, and it could possibly be more, so fourteen days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
With the understanding that wellness leave does not carry over, it's a use or lose it type leave. So if you do not use it by the end of the school year, then it does not roll over.
Okay, thank you. With the jewel abatement settlement funds, I really, I'll even beg my colleagues to make sure this money goes for addiction and the problems our community is seeing right now. Naysayers on this board behind the scenes have said, I don't know if I can support that, it's so expensive, it's so expensive. You can't say that anymore. We have the money. The state has given us the money. We have gotten the money from this abatement fund. We have the money to do something about this problem. I mean, yesterday, we had another death on discipline hearing. We hear about addiction most of the time. And we, what we're doing is not working. How many kids are going to die before we try to do something? And we've got a great plan, we're going to get, we're going to have a workshop Monday. The money is here, and for us to say, oh, we've got extra money that was, you know, granted us because of an, of abuse situation of this jewel, it should go for addiction, it should go for resources, it should go to help these kids, but we got extra, so let's, let's buy paper. You know, I'm sorry. This is, I mean, this is like, you, the money's here. Let's not give it away to something else. We have been saying for years, we've been shot down twice. You don't have the funding, you don't have the funding, you don't have the funding. We have the funding, and I beg my colleagues not to throw away the funding to something else. I'm not saying that's thrown away. I'm a teacher. I understand that sometimes you don't have all your resources, but we have got to stay and keep this money where it's meant to be and help our students. I mean, we just got, I mean, yesterday. So I am asking my colleagues, do not keep the funding where it's supposed to go, and let's make some radical changes like the western part of our state, like the governor's endorsing, and let's do something. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Thank you, and I agree with Ms. Brown and Ms. Wiems that we should use the jewel abatement money for addiction purposes. I have a question that I want to have clarified. On slide fifteen, it talks about the three percent compensation that's provided through state funding for SOQ-funded instructional positions. And then on slide nineteen, it talks about, I assume this is what administration is proposing for salary increases. So for example, it's proposing instructional and additional three and a half percent. So would that be in addition to the three percent that the state will be providing for a total of six and a half percent increase?
No, ma'am. So currently, and what was approved in the budget was a step increase. On the teacher instructional scale, the step increase is incremental one point five percent. On the unified scale, it's one percent for year zero through fourteen and fifteen above, one point five percent. So the money would cover two additional percent to match what the governor has indicated of a total of three percent for SOQ positions. In totality, the one and a half percent plus that two percent will give our teachers a three point five percent increase. And on the unified scale, three percent for those years zero through fourteen, and three point five percent for fifteen and above.
Okay, so I, I just want to clarify, when we, when we say matching funds, it's that we're, the government is, the state government is paying for the instructional and SOQ positions, and then we're paying salaries of everybody else who's not in that.
Correct.
So when we say matching funds, we're not matching teacher funds and increasing it.
Correct, correct.
So basically, the additional money that, so to kind of simplify it, the three percent of the state budget with that slide that's up there, that three percent is three of that three and a half for the instructional scale? Is that accurate?
I think that's how, how it works, yes. I'm double checking, because there have been times where the state budget has said three percent, but only a portion of it is funded in one year and a portion in the other year. So it's three percent, so that is in there, yes.
And can you give me, well, I'll ask more detailed questions later. I, the problem that I have with this, and obviously, we're going to give the three percent because that's coming from the state. But the problem that I have with the additional funds is that we cut eighty positions, which increased class sizes for our students. That negatively impacted our students. And I'm looking through all these budget proposals and not seeing what we're, with the additional funds, not seeing what we're doing for our students here. And I said during the budget presentations this last year that I had, I had some major concerns with increasing class sizes, and that if we had additional funds, I wanted that, wanted that money to go toward our students to get those class sizes back down. So that's not proposed in here, and so I would personally like to see some of the money go into tackling that increased class sizes that, that we've had. I fully support the two million that you've put into the special ed in the additional funds. I think that's a very good use of money. And in my packet, I have some slides that weren't discussed, maybe that was an accident. It talks about the Fair Labor Standards Act and how.
So, so, so that would have been about another ten minutes of presentation we felt like you guys might want to be aware of, but we didn't cover it.
Okay, so my question is, is this going to be a budget impact for us? The Fair Labor Standards Act changes?
Eventually, there is going to be a budget impact. There'll be a little bit of an impact this year, but it'll be more of an impact down the road.
So is that something that we need to add in here?
Well, we are factoring that in, absolutely.
Okay, that's, where is that? Is that in?
If I could share with you, so with the change in the increase in the amount, our current employees that will be impacted are our cafeteria managers. So HR held a meeting with cafeteria managers because they are no longer under the threshold, which means they would receive overtime for any hours that's reported over forty. So we have already met with them, we've had a conversation, we have worked with the Department of Food Services to estimate a cost should our cafeteria managers basically need overtime in which to fulfill their requirements of the job. So when Dr. Robertson mentioned budgetary, it would be a minimal impact for the initial year. The, the change that comes in place in January would bring on a few other positions that we have. So again, that conversation would be between HR and those managers of those positions to, one, talk about the efficiencies and whether or not these individuals can complete their job requirements within forty hours. And if not, then what do we need to do? Do we need to reevaluate and reassign job responsibilities to make sure that they maintain a forty-hour work week? So it's kind of like for our non-exempt and exempt employees, you know, I like to say, I can work a thousand hours a week, and people probably would just tell me to take a nap and get a little rest, whereas other employees that, that would qualify for overtime. So we have met with Vika Harris, the Director of Food Services. There was a meeting held with all the cafeteria managers, so we could explain to them how this impacts their role. Because those of us who've worked in a school, we know they are very efficient in, in what they do. But some do like to work and have that opportunity to work over and beyond. So we've done some cost estimate scenarios for food services, because they're independently funded by the money in which they raise, and to see how that impact would be, and that's something we would continue to monitor.
Okay, thank you.
Should it have a large budgetary impact, we will make sure that you are aware, as well as Dr. Robertson.
Okay, very helpful, excellent, and thank you so much.
And now, Ms. Manning, if I may, address the allocation issue with the adjustment in increasing the staffing ratio. Again, a couple of things that are impacting our decisions as to whether or not to, to do that. It's, it's June, what, what's the day? Fourth. We have, I think we have one priority transfer left. The priority transfers were created by staffing that was already sent out based upon the budget that we submitted in the CION and the budget that was approved by the city in May. Yesterday, we were briefed and senior staff were sitting at about seventy vacancies right now, teacher vacancies. If we wanted to say we wanted to lower the staffing ratio, let's say down to twenty-one point five and pick up those forty teachers. We're already at seventy vacancies. Now we'd be at a hundred and ten vacancies. And we've had a number of teachers that were placed as priorities as a result of that reduction that have already chosen their new schools. We would be opening up Pandora's Box to re-go through that entire process with ten days left in the school year. So we decided that we're going to play this thing out the way we thought we, it was going to work. When we made that decision to go from twenty-one point two five to twenty-one point seven five, and our numbers indicate we'll still fall in within this class size expectations, we'll see what happens, but that is not a decision that I think is appropriate this time, given those circumstances.
Is it possible to get a breakdown on the impacts on class sizes and what specific classes were impacted?
It'll be, we can, but it'll be different from school to school, because again, creating a master schedule is based upon the student course selections, the number of certified teachers in a section.
So it was just allocations, basically, it was reduced number at each school, not necessarily?
At each school, correct.
And Dr. Robertson, if you don't mind me adding, I, I know we continue to have the conversation around compensation, and we are fortunate to have the additional fundings to come back to the board to ask for two percent. But as I shared, you know, with my colleagues, we still don't know what our competitors are going to do with the extra money that they also receive, which means as we continue to try to close the gap, you know, if, if Chesapeake and Norfolk received fifteen-plus million, and they commit to putting it into compensation, we are continuing to widening. And so it is concerning, because our ultimate goal is to put the best, most qualified teacher in front of our students. That remains our goal, and it is becoming a little more difficult to do that when you can make an additional four percent upwards to eight percent in our neighboring districts, and the cost of living in Virginia Beach continues to rise. So we, believe me, we've thought about this, we've mulled it over. We bring this proposal to you because we know for our students to be academically successful, we need to hire the best staff possible. And we can no longer just rely on our name of Virginia Beach being the best school division. People have bills to pay, and they're making those tough choices. So I do appreciate your consideration for that additional two percent for our staff.
Okay, Ms. Riggs.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Woodhouse. I was getting ready to say all of that. But I have to say, I don't see where we're not doing something for the students. By having our teachers there and in a position, to have teachers that we pay, that's doing something for the students. If we don't have the teachers there, we're going to have substitutes. And we don't want to start our year that way, and that will hurt our students. So in the long run, this helps the students. We need, like Mrs. Woodhouse said, to try to take that gap and close it more. Take that gap and close it more. As she said, we don't know how, we can imagine that they would probably use it towards their compensation. We don't need to take anything away. And another thing is, the city made sure that their employees got three point five percent. We should get three point five percent. First of all, we didn't ask them. Our esteemed superintendent in that nice letter sent them and said, hey, can't you think about us and hold us harmless on this two percent? They did all kinds of other things, they put money towards all kinds of other things, but they didn't give it to their schools, which we all know brings. Families to Virginia Beach. Really? They couldn't do that? Five million dollars to them? But to us, look what it does. So really, it's, as far as it not doing something for the students, I disagree. Now, the question I do have is, this three hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. You're saying we should put that towards the recovery school effort?
You could put it in the categorical grants fund for the jewel abatement and then direct us as to how you would like those funds to be spent.
Can we, it categorical, could we put it towards keeping that second wellness day? Because would that equal to that?
No, that should probably, that would stay in the operating fund, doing an expense like that.
That would, we could not use it for that.
Confirm that, Ms., Ms. Riggs.
Please confirm that.
But I don't, I don't believe we can do.
I think we need to do everything we can, and I understand the money we don't have, but everything we can to keep as many teachers as we can. We all found out just how much they appreciated that. And we need to do as many benefits as we possibly can to make sure we keep our teachers, cause as Ms. Woodhouse said. Virginia Beach is no longer, oh, that's the place to teach. They need to pay their bills. And as far as tax increases, yeah, but we didn't make those tax increases, our city council did. So they are the ones that are responsible for that. We need to be saying something to them. And to the General Assembly as well. So we need to do everything we possibly can to keep as many teachers as we can, please check into that. I mean, I truly agree with Mrs. Um, Weems, we need to take care of what's going on with, with our kids. I don't know if putting this money into it is going to keep the drug deals and stuff from happening. That's along with our police and parents being. On, on it and looking at what's happening, people keeping the guns out of their, as, um. Our chief said, keeping the guns out of their cars, that kinda stuff is what's happening. We can't, we can do a lot, and I expect us to help out, because we after all. Pick up the slack of everything that happens in society. But we can't do it all by ourselves. There's got to be a lot more done in our community, and it's not just by the schools. And this is Lynette, are we still suppo- is, are there any more, um. Cases out there where we're, you know, I keep hearing more things coming in, there are more.
You are participating in other class actions.
Class actions, mm-hmm.
Uh, well, no, for the jewel litigation, there is no restriction on how you use the funds. Some of the other class actions you're involved in may have, if you receive settlement funds, they may have restrictions.
So there is, okay.
But other ones may limit what you're able to spend.
Now, are we gonna be getting other ones? We talked about that?
We're happy to talk to you in close session about that, I'm not authorized to talk about that.
But we've, I know we've talked about there might be some coming down the pike, and we, we, I mean, and we're reading publicly. You know, they're talking about, uh, communication and media and all the kids, you know. These file, these cases being filed against, um, all kinds of things, you know, cell phones, whatever else.
Every one of those, but one of, either or, other ones you are involved in.
Right, okay, alright, thank you. So I just, I wanted to point that out, but I really would like to find out that, cause I think. We need to do everything we can to make sure we have a teacher in front of every one of our classrooms. In August, September, whenever we start, August. And that's so important, and we all know that.
So I see no one else, so, oh, that's right, you did, Ms. Franklin.
Uh, Mr. Din, I don't have a request to speak, by the way, so, um. I just wanted to point out, first of all, um, there's been a lot of discussion, good discussion on this board. But I just wanna clarify, just because of my profession, um, that Virginia Beach has got the lowest real estate tax rate. Um, and has had it in all of our sister cities. So when people say that we are raising taxes, real estate taxes, I wanna be clear that that is not the case. That we have the lowest tax rate of all of our sister cities. What has happened is that your home value has gone up and based on the assessments that came out in July. That that is the reason why you're paying more real estate taxes. So I just wanna clarify that. The most accurate information is being put out there, Vir- Virginia Beach did not raise real estate taxes, your equity has gone up. And therefore, that's why you're paying more real estate. So I just, I don't want that to be a confusion. Um, so with that being said, I do, I appreciate Ms. Woodhouse, um. Putting out there because, uh, the, the fact that the other cities have yet to decide what they're going to do. Because the state funding for a three percent compensation is not just for Virginia Beach, and when I was looking at slide twenty. Um, Chesapeake, Hampton and Norfolk have all of the same salaries effective August first. So I have to assume that we are probably going to see that those are also gonna go up. So I just wanna clarify that right now, we're just presuming that they're going to stay the same. However, we should also assume that there is going to be a potential increase by those. We'd be silly to, to not take that into account, is that correct?
Correct. Both of those school divisions in particular, um, already built in and approved in their current operating budget. A larger increase for their employees.
Know what those increases were?
Norfolk's ranged anywhere upwards to seven percent, and they are also looking at, um. Those lean, I call it lean years, where we were only able to give a step or a point five increase. A phase in, um, to tackle that hurdle with their current employees who stayed, um, with them. Chesapeake came out with, I wanna say it was five percent? I think it was five percent initially, and I can go back and confirm that, um, five percent initially. And so those numbers account on the chart what their July one teacher salaries would be.
Yeah, so, so, and even with them not increasing or not using the, the assumed increase. Um, we're still number four after we take into account the fact that we're gonna increase, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I, I, I do feel like some good discussion was had, and, um. I agree that class sizes are problematic, and I also agree that if we have seventy teachers. Uh, seventy teacher deficit right now, how are we going to create lower class sizes with the lack of teachers? I think that that, that goes hand in hand. Uh, we need teachers to lower the class sizes. And so, um, I, I think that we still need to have discussion on that, and. I would just like to say publicly, I do support the special education, um, and at least a minimum of one wellness day, so. Um, so I would like to go on record as saying that I do support those first two, um, additional considerations. And, um, I look forward to additional, uh, conversation with the board.
So I have a question, and it's about the autonomy we have over a sum of money like the Jewel Settlement. So that's been sitting there for a little bit, and I'm not sure what we're allowed to do with that money, but it seems. That perhaps we could've invested that money in something safe like a, a ninety day T-bill or something that would have netted some. Some income, you know, some interest. Are we allowed to do anything like that with money just sitting there? It's been sitting, it's just been sitting.
No, you'd have to talk to Ms. Pate about it, but I think the city allowed you to put it in a categorical area to protect it. And that's what they gave you, you'd have to talk to the city.
Well, that's why I asked, I just, it seems a waste that it's, you know, just been sitting for nearly a year, and we could've. Made a little bit of money on it, so, anybody else?
You haven't had most of it that long. Been coming in throughout the year.
Regardless, it was just a, just a, just a question, what you can do with money just sitting there, so, anybody else?
If, if it's okay, if we go to the last, the, the next steps, cause again, um. What I've heard tonight is related to the Jewel Abatement Settlement. I've heard, Ms. Ri- we're gonna get Ms. Riggs and the entire board an answer about what we can do with the three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Ms. Anderson has expressed her, uh, wish to move it to the operating fund, which would mean we'd have to spend it by June thirtieth. Uh, Ms. Brown, Ms. Weems and Ms. Manning have indicated it needs to stay in the grant. Uh, so I need to hear from anyone else who wants to provide their thoughts to me by Friday. So that we can use that information to build in our resolution for Monday. Uh, cause our board meeting next week is on Monday. And the goal for next Monday is to not only, and I know this is odd, is to come to you with information, but also then go to action. Because for, the city needs to have that information by the eighteenth. So they can prepare it for action on July second, and then we have two weeks to turn it around, to get it into payroll for August first. We're already losing a month. So I apologize for placing the board in that situation, but really next Monday, you guys have to decide. So I'd love to have everybody's feedback as soon as possible, um. And we'll get you an answer on that grant stuff tomorrow to the entire board.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson, for answering my question and making sure that we get clarification on how we can spend. Um, those abatement funds. I also wanna go on record of being in support of the special education support. As well as the wellness stays. Um, I do have, um, a question probably for Dr. Woodhouse. Um, as it pertains to closing the gap, the goal of closing the gap. Um, and with what you have proposed with closing the gap, um, and what Ms. Franklin has shared. Uh, looks like with all things considered, with what our, um. Surrounding cities, what they might do, it still looks like we're gonna have a significant gap to close. So is what you're proposing enough? And.
Well, we would always love to have additional funding, so, you know, you, you're speaking to the HR person. Who's gonna tell you, uh, compensation without a doubt, um, is huge in our department. And what we advocate for is staying competitive with our neighboring districts. As you can see on that chart, that additional two percent will bring us within two percent of Chesapeake. That's because of last year's gains, that was huge, that was tremendous. Um, we brought down almost an eight, nine percent. Uh, gap down to two point five seven percent and now to two percent. Um, uh, Norfolk, um, and again, has always, um, far exceeded. They really just came out of the park this year, um, and, you know, just hit a home run. Um, but we more so look to Chesapeake. I am hopeful that their budgets, being as large as they were in the articles I've read, where superintendents had to back out. Um, because they overestimated the amount of funding they were receiving. And promised up to six wor- six percent raises are now having to go back and say we can only afford to do three percent. That's what I'm so appreciative of, we do not overpromise and, uh, to our employees. And so I'm hoping that both of those districts fall in that situation, and that money they're receiving is covering what they've already promised. But we can only tell. I do believe what has been proposed with the money that we have is the best option. And is a good option for our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Woodhouse, and that, the, the end of my question was, um, how do our benefits compare to our rival? Does it help also with closing the gap, and is there, have you all looked into other ways that we can provide? More, um, benefits to add more incentive to go with Virginia Beach City Public Schools?
And I am proud to report, two years ago, our school board put upwards of nine million dollars into our benefits. And was able to reduce the out-of-pocket premium cost for our employees by almost fifty percent. And this is the, probably the first year in our employee input survey that benefits was not ranked dead last. So that is huge, yes, yes, yes. And so when we, in HR, when we bring forth the proposals. To Dr. Robertson and to senior staff and then to the school board. We look at the collective package, which also includes benefits. And what we were hearing from our employees was if you're single and have a family. You could not afford to work in Virginia Beach because your out-of-pocket premium costs were so expensive. So that almost fifty percent reduction, as I had one of our employees in HR tell me, um, personally was. That was like getting a three percent raise, and so it was very beneficial. So we thank you for that and the continued support of this board as we look at compensation, the whole package.
Excellent, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Ms. Riggs.
Ms. Woodhouse, can you share with us, uh, about the compensation, because you, you weren't here and didn't hear this? That, um, Chesapeake used to have, I don't know if they still have it for their health insurance, but their pharmacy and. Can you share that? I mean, just, people were leaving Virginia Beach because they were looking at that compensation. Because our insurance was so high, and thank goodness, we were able to do what we did two years ago, but. Can you share with her? I don't know if they're still doing it.
Right, uh, Chesapeake does fund their own pharmacy, and there's even been, uh, talk, I, you know, I follow them in the paper. And we reach out to them about the possibility of opening a second pharmacy. So you hear what I call good and not so great things, so. People indicated that, yes, they can get their prescriptions at a little reduced cost, but that's only if you live in close proximity of the pharmacy. What I'm appreciative about Virginia Beach is our employees have multiple options in which to have their prescriptions filled. So whether it's Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, and, um, we're always evaluating the cost. The out-of-pocket cost of prescriptions, and if you're willing to go, you know, we call it with the generic brand. Um, and then you pay even less, but the options are there for our employees. Our committee, um, we do meet and we have investigated, you know, what would be the, uh, cost of a potential. Uh, pharmacy in Virginia Beach, and what we found was the, the costs outweighed the benefits. Um, it was extremely costly, and then where would you put it when we cover such a vast part of the city? You know, where would you put it? Because, you know, as an employee said, I'm not driving ten mi- ten miles. To get a prescription that might save me a, a couple of dollars, but we keep that on the radar, and we continue to have those conversations. But we have not found it at this point in time, uh, feasible enough to bring to the superintendent and to this board as a. Potential possibility.
And there was another thing that we also did with this pharmacy, um, is we, we had a committee. With the city council, there was two of us, uh, Mrs. Melnick and I were on it from the, um, school board. And Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Moss were on it, um, from, from the city. To study, looking at possibly doing, you know, opening a pharmacy. And we didn't get very far, you guys have got much further than we have, because we just kept getting roadblocks of being able to visit, see what it's doing. But unfortunately, what the people out there, meaning our employees, what they're hearing is what I just said. They're not hearing everything that she knows in this sharing. They're hearing, well, it's a lot cheaper. Because their, their insurance, you know, is cheaper, their medicines are cheaper, so that's the part they were hearing. And they were leaving. Now, did they find out when they got there? Mm, it's still not worth it, because Virginia Beach's resources are just so much better. Some of them would come back, you know, but, but I just wanted you to, to hear that that kind of thing is, was happening. And we have studied it, and you guys have studied it, and like you said, you're keeping it on your radar, so. That's just one of the small things, but thank you for sharing that.
Consolidated benefits, so our benefits are tied with the city. So when we make those decisions, both the city as well as the schools have to be in agreement with.
And it, and it didn't used to be. We used to be a, our own entity, and then how many years ago has it been? Ten, fifteen?
It's, it's been a, yeah, it's been a, I'm thinking, what was it, mid nineties when that changed about?
And it, and it really made a difference, it, it increased our insurance to the utmost, which really. But thank goodness you guys all got together and said, hey, we gotta do something, because people were just like, we can't live here anymore, it's just too expensive. So, because you brought that up, I just wanted to say something, but I, that's not what I really raised my hand for, Mrs. Melnick, I wanted to say this. Um, I wanted to ask this question with Dr. Robertson, the Virginia Literacy Act. Okay, how much are we already putting in that, and what are we doing? Cause I know that that has been a major. Is it a non-funded mandate of what we have to do? I mean, what, what, I know that we have to do something with that. And how much have we, are we already putting into it and? And how much have we, are we already putting into it, and?
Yeah, we received twenty million dollars, um, for, for the support of Virginia Literacy Act, four, fourteen million dollars. Went to support All In Virginia, uh, four million dollars went to support textbook, uh, purchases. And two million dollars went to support chronic absenteeism. And those plans are in place and working, working quite well, and that money's being well spent and is very much appreciated.
And, and that's, is that the one million that you're talking about, right up there?
Yeah, so that, that million would, would be to support, uh, provide additional supports through collaboration days. And site-based substitutes to our elementary schools in the greatest need.
And I know that Virginia, that Virginia Literacy Act has, you know, caused a lot of things, idea and a lot of work for our school systems. Matter of fact, I was reading on our, um, um, the S B A newsletter, just a week ago maybe. That there was one particular, um, district that was going to give teachers time off to help prepare. For the literacy and getting ready for all the things that were, you know, that. We're all here and that we're gonna have to do, and get our teachers ready, all this extra. And, uh, uh, there was a lot of pushback from their community, and they have withdrawn that now, so, um. I know that our superintendents and our administration are trying to do everything they can to help with that. And I appreciate all that you're doing, thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
So, um. I just wondered, you know, a few weeks ago, we were hearing about, um. Our sheriff wanted us to do, to reenact the DARE program. And I wonder if, um, maybe putting some of this three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars toward. Um, in a fund that would go toward getting education to our, I mean, we can't. Ms., Ms. Weems, we're right, we can't ignore the fact that we have teenagers out there that are abusing drugs. Um, I don't know if that would help, I'm not sure. But, you know, I, I, I don't want to ignore the fact that we've got teenagers out there that are dying. Because they're getting involved with drugs, um. I just, I don't want to be, you know, like, turn my back on that at the same time. But, you know, I just wonder if maybe we could maybe put something toward education in that regard as well.
Yes, Ms. Anderson, I think when we get this information to you about these grants. It's gonna give all the board members an opportunity to weigh in on what's the best use of it. I look at Bobby Jamison back there, he's probably licking his chops going. Three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars with all the stuff he's doing to be proactive in the, in, in the work to support mental health. Um, so we'll get you the information so you guys can make an informed decision on what's best. Uh, from a board perspective, to support the use of those funds, based upon what we're allowed to use those funds for.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Woodhouse, I know that you send this to us, and, and I don't know how often you do, but if you could resend. Exactly how many teachers are saying, I don't want to teach in Virginia Beach anymore, I want to teach in Norfolk. I don't want to teach in Virginia Beach because salary, I want to go teach in Chesapeake. Can you resend that to us, about exactly how many were?
Yes.
That's the exit survey that we send out quarterly?
Right, and I was gonna mention, um, where we see it is in our number of applicants applying. So for instance, our employees who are with us, and once they typically get past the tenth year. They're more likely to stay with us. Where we're seeing the reduction is in our initial applicant pools. So for instance, it's funny, Dr. Robertson, I just had this, uh, conversation, um, around a, um, administrative position. And, and he mentioned to me, he said, I'm not seeing the outside candidates. And I said, that's where you're starting to see the impact of the pay differential between us and our neighboring districts. So where once upon a time, and this was before the shortage, when you had a hundred, you know, applicants. You're seeing fewer because they have more choices close by. And so, um, but as Ms. Manning shared with the board last year, and with H R, which we were greatly appreciative. We had a ninety-eight percent fill rate. Now, for many, they would say, you know, let's applaud that, and we did for a moment. But our ultimate goal is a hundred percent, because that's still two percent of our students who did not have. A licensed teacher in their classroom. And so, um, our goal is a hundred percent, so where you see the greater number is not so much on the back end, and you see that in the PERS report. It's the candidates who are not even applying to us because they're going to the other districts who have a higher starting salary.
Okay, yeah, well, with your proposal bringing it within two, approximately two percent of Chesapeake. If they don't do anything, but that's a big if. I mean, that pretty much equates for a first-year teacher forty bucks a paycheck. You know, if she, if she or he divides it with twenty-six all throughout the year.
Right, and it's the whole package, so they look at the benefits, but what they look at too is, um. The cost of living in Virginia Beach is just, you know, it's just outrageous, I don't know how else to say it. Um, and so, and then when you couple that with gas prices. People are trying to find work that is close to home, and so they're not looking to commute. And so when you can purchase a home, because it's funny, Ms. Franklin, you hit it right on the head. When people are saying that my price increases because the value of your home increased so much. So whereas we pay a lower tax rate here in Virginia Beach. Your out-of-pocket cost is still more, because the price of your home is more. And even the apartments, we used to could at least recommend a certain number of apartments. And apartments we recommended three to five years ago have doubled in price. And so that's what we hear, so when, when we make an offer. Because H R, I like to remind people, is the only department who can make an offer to an employee to work. What we find is even those who accept, we have received callbacks to say, I can't find affordable housing in Virginia Beach. Therefore, I'm gonna have to decline the job offer you made and go with such and such and such and such. And that's where we're losing our candidates.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and it appears that finally, oh, I know, I see you, Ms. Riggs.
Sorry, I just have to keep asking this, these questions. Ms. Woodhouse, how many, um, were there any classrooms this year that did not have a teacher in it the entire year?
I can't tell you offhand all year, but the state, um, has a website where they publish, um, the. Through the I-Pals report, the percentage of classrooms covered by certified teacher. We had the highest because we got state accolades, Ms. Manning sent us the website, but even in a state department meeting. They gave us accolades, because Virginia Beach had ninety-eight percent fill rate. And so again, it goes back to that, of course, we celebrate the ninety-eight percent, but we look out for all of our students. So what worries me the most is the two percent who did not have that. I can't tell you it was one particular class all year, because as you indicated, if you have a teacher leave mid-year. You know, you bring in a, as a qualified sub as best we can with the hopes of staffing that position. So at the point in time in which they pulled that data for the state report, we had a ninety-eight percent fill rate.
If I could expand on that for a moment, so, we partnered with university instructors this year. So there were a number of classrooms that were covered in what they call, they call a side-by-side model. Which is where they've staffed the teacher who's a content expert. We put a long-term sub or in the classroom, uh, s, to make sure the kids got content knowledge. And schools also who had been assigned a coach or specialist. That coach or specialist may have never actually done coaching or specialist duties because they were teaching a class.
Alright, so I, I mean, I just wanted to, because we, we got the personnel reports. And, and they were, I mean, usually, you know, by December, they kind of go down to a couple, two, three, four pages. Seven, eight, nine, all year long, where people were constantly leaving, it was a revolving door. Because they were leaving, and we'd get more in, and they, I mean, it was a, I mean, you guys trying to keep up with it. It was hard, even though we had ninety-eight percent, and that's wonderful, I, I, you know, I applaud that, you guys did a fantastic, well, we know what you did. And how you guys were out there, just, you know, even at the graduations and doing what you were doing, thank you very much for your innovative ideas. That mean, it really made a difference, um, but, um. Still, that is very disruptive to students and their learning, and, and, and the whole school for that matter. I mean, it's, it's very difficult, so I want to do as much as we can, and that's why I asked about that, uh, one or three, that. Yeah, asking about that, but let me, let me do say this, I agree with putting the money towards. Helping our students, that is definitely up there. I've always supported doing something with this recovery school, it, it has gotten so bad, and I'm, I'm scared. It has affected my family, um, and so I understand, and I definitely feel like we need to do something too. So I'm definitely behind that, I just wanted, I'm, just for curiosity's sake, I also know that we need teachers in front of our classes too, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm closing it, um, thank you, thank you all, that was great. Um, just a few little announcements for the record. Ms. Toni Otto, um, Ms. Owens did send me a text before the start of the meeting that I missed, and so she is at C H K D with her little. And so that's a family medical. Um, and for the public, um, the governance committee meeting for tomorrow has been canceled. As everything for the retreat is planned and ready to go. And, um, also, please be mindful of the fact that our school board meeting is not next Tuesday, it is next Monday. And so we look forward to seeing everybody next Monday, as it will be graduation week. And with that, we are adjourned at five twenty-two, however, we are going to read and to close. And I will turn to, um, yes, Ms. Franklin to get us, get us there.
Alright, I moved at the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth. In Code of Virginia two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven, part A, paragraph one, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion to performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining. Or resignation of pu, specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation. Will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Namely to discuss the superintendent's evaluation of matters related to the superintendent's contract. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second? Second by Bev Anderson. Do we have a quorum right now?
Alright, motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Anderson, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eight ayes to go into close, the motion did pass.
Thank you.
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board. That such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting. To which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion. By which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Alright, motion made by Ms. Uh, Manning, second by Ms. Brown, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eight ayes for certification of close, the motion did pass.
Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned at a seven eleven.